All right, we have our agenda. Greetings, everyone. Happy Monday. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Let's establish that we have a forum, please, beginning with a roll call vote. Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Christopher?
Here.
Juan Carlos?
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a forum. Meredith? Is our meeting improperly noticed? Thank you. I just had a moment of pause of, oh, and before we go, who is our next person? Thank you. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each meeting, each of our board meetings, by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. I'm going to take the chance to read, as I feel like I am delegating a lot to all of you and appreciate that, but I'd love to take a turn if you all don't mind. So from your agenda, our equity statement reads, "In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system, such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand." All right, moving on to our agenda. Any questions or comments? I'm actually going to propose a rearrangement of the agenda. If anyone else has any thoughts prior to that. Given some public comments that have been brought to my attention that directly impact agenda items, I'd actually like to move public comment before we take board action this evening. So if we could put that between the superintendent's report and board action, so between items three and four. Thoughts about that? I'd accept a motion then to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. All those in favor of approving tonight's amended agenda signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been adopted as amended. So moving into the superintendent's report to start our work.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for today's meeting. We're going to begin right away with a budget and annual report draft conversation. And I would like to invite Deputy Superintendent Chad Wiese to do that part of the presentation.
Good evening, school board. Good to see everyone. We have a two fairly big agenda items tonight and are excited to discuss with all of you. The first one is an update on where we're at in our budget process. So last week, you should have received a draft version of the 2425 budget. Juan Carlos, good job. You remember your homework to bring it to the school board. Kudos. We won't call anybody out. It is also attached in board docs for the public to see as well. And again, this is a draft. We're welcoming any feedback that you see tonight. And we'll make final edits following feedback from the board and then move towards a finalized budget book that we will ask the board to vote on at our next meeting. That will be essentially the document we will be working with until we get to the October annual meeting when we actually set the levy. Again, this is our review tonight of our best guess in time in terms of the information we've got and where the budget is heading by the time we get to the fall. We've already snagged just a couple of small things regarding dates in item number two that we will edit on our own as we continue to work through this draft, but we're certainly welcoming feedback, including feedback to the board. So I'd like to move the levy in a different direction if they're not comfortable with the direction we've been heading, but we've continued to keep the board in the loop and asked for feedback until we get to this document. Before we get going, did want to thank Marcy and Karen from our communications team that kind of put the dressed-up twist on the budget book this year. So we are excited about kind of the new and improved format that we believe we're going to continue to have this be a continuous improvement document as we work our way through this on an annual basis. Tonight, rather quickly, none of this should really be a surprise to the school board because we've been keeping up to date basically on a monthly basis throughout the year. We're going to discuss the budget goals. We're going to review key components that are embedded in that draft budget book. We will talk through our five-year forecast starting this year and as it goes into the future, we'll review the key components of this budget book. We will look ahead at some key dates and then we'll ask for any feedback or discussion. So again, our primary goal out of this year's budget, this is year two of a two-year budget cycle, and we have more knowings than we will have next year at this time, when we likely won't have an entire state budget completely handed off to us before we get to October. Our goal, because we are very fortunate in the Verona Area School District, we've been able to leverage a growing tax base, and that's in the form of current properties that exist that are continuing to become more valuable and also new properties. In fact, the city of Verona alone has 5% that new construction this year, meaning 5% of the tax base did not exist last year. It's not existing property appreciating. It is new construction that will be paying property taxes that didn't do it last year. Using those tools, we believe for this budget cycle that we can present the community and the board a budget that existing property owners, on average, won't see a property tax increase. Some will be higher, some will be lower, but on average, the budget we're presenting to you tonight does not come along with a property tax increase, on average, to existing property owners. Already in this budget, staff compensation in line with CPI, some debt management strategies that we will leverage again in the 2425 and likely 2526 budget. This budget, we have drastically limited numbers of staff as we're preparing for next year's state budget. And we've continued to value and prioritize aligning resources with where we need them related to results policies. The board's seen this a number of times. I'm not going to read it bullet by bullet, but again, we know this this year and we'll not next year. We've got $325 per pupil. That's a big number for us as we get into third Friday count time. The rest of this, the board has already seen, but all these things are embedded in the budget book. Spent a little more time on this one as we're starting to forecast where we're going down the road. I highlighted this year's budget, and the board's been familiar with this rather complicated worksheet, but it does share a ton of information and does tell a story. So we orange-boxed the entire fiscal year. And then the first orange box from the top, that $827,000, that is the remaining amount of money we have left from the $19 million operating referendum. And that is a product of super-high inflation and us essentially giving our staff, for the most part, raises in line with inflation. I will remind you, last year at this time, we didn't even do that. We were 2% below CPI in terms of base wage increases related to where we were. But in general, we've continued to stay very competitive with area school districts. But that's the money we have for next year's budget that will give us permission to exceed the state imposed revenue limit, wherever that adds up. The next orange box down for next year, for this year, is our mill rate projection. That's 1099. We feel very good while continuing to tick down our mill rate, our taxing ratio relative to property value. And the final orange box that's outside that in fiscal year '26 is just a peak ahead to the fact that we are forecasting likely a more difficult budget in fiscal year '26. And again, we were very limited on new hires related to this year's budget because we are forecasting the potential of a budget shortfall for next year. The board should not hesitate to pop in and ask questions. We left time at the end. But certainly, if there are questions at all, this is certainly the meeting to do so. So our new budget book that all of you have had a chance to take a look at does highlight our academic priorities aligned to expenditures. We believe highlights the OEs in line with that. And we want to make sure that this is a resource for our community in terms of making sure that our budget is as transparent as possible heading into the annual meeting. This will be a document we will post on our website ahead of the annual meeting and then once the budget passed, this will continue to stay with us for the next year. I took some screenshots out of the budget book that I think are kind of some of the key pillars that we wanted to make sure the board was aware of. Our all-in operating budget for next year is $112 million. And we are projecting our mill rate to go lower to that 1099. We'll go into our equalized property value, but again, the numbers related to equalized property value in some regards are almost striking to see how much property value has gone up even in the last four or five years in our school district. It is amazing. We did a high-level overview with where we're expecting to see revenues. And you can see there, about 60% of our overall operating budget on an annual basis comes from property taxes. And that's directly related to that levy that we set again in October. Certainly, we can answer questions as we flip through these. Here is our updated expenditure overview. You can see the, again, and this should not be new for the board, about 8% of our overall budget is related to people, and that's paying them and benefits. We are a people-centered organization, and that's where the majority of our money goes on the annual basis with the people serving our students.
Maybe it is worth a little pause. And so, and truthfully, I'll just share, you know, as I read through all of this again, I just feel like I am always learning just extra nuggets as we do this. And I'm so appreciative of all the information we get constantly because, as we've talked, the budget is so complex and the way that the state functions is so complex. So partially, I'm asking questions, I think, here to just reiterate and to maybe reframe to not only help my ongoing learning, but perhaps the community. So back on slide 14, just the revenue overview. Could you just speak a little bit to, I mean, when you look at that percentage, right? Like, wow, 60% of the income for the district comes from taxpayers versus the state. Can you just talk about, like, that ratio is not always determined by us necessarily, right? I mean, just how distorted that is as to maybe a quick background as to why that leans so heavily on property tax?
Absolutely. I will give the quick Cliff Notes response. And then this is certainly one of Pete's areas of expertise that he's projecting and calculating what we're going to get in terms of state aid. So state aid calculations come from two main places. How many students you have and how much property value you have related to how many students you have. And the idea of the equalized aid formula is that property-rich school districts pay more of a percentage of their overall operating budget on the property tax column. And we are a district that's what's referred to as negatively aided, which means kind of if you split the state in half, there's a certain number of school districts that get more aided proportionally. And those are the students that are property value poor compared to us, who are property value rich and more negatively aided. And Pete has a, again, I kind of joke about it, but a spreadsheet that'll break the internet to calculate all, to figure all of that out ahead of time to give us a super-accurate estimate in terms of where we'll end up with aid. So there are some school districts that are the far end. You can see the school district, like the Lakeland School District, that is in the Monocle area, very few students, and millions of dollars in property value. Lots of folks that own lake properties that don't send students to Lakeland High School. And that's a school district that gets zeroed, and they aren't aided at all because they're so rich in property value. The state's theory is they can spread that out around property tax owners, and they don't need to kick in any state aid. And there's other school districts, actually rather close to us, the Lloyds, an example, that is almost entirely aided, that all of their budget comes from state aid because they have lots of kids, but very little property value related to how many students they have. Pete, I don't know if I kind of hit that right, or if there's pieces you're feeling like you want to fill in.
I think you gave it a nail on the head there. But I'll say one more part for trying to figure out where the state aid formula is going to land is, Chad mentioned the two parts, well, property value and the number of students. But there's also the shared cost, meaning how our district's spending. And right now, what we're waiting for on October 15th, when we actually find out what our aid is going to be next year, is DPI is still having school districts calculate and calculate all their calculations to figure out how much they will spend. And everyone's audit is going on, or audit is going on right now at this moment, too. So then districts will be reporting all of that data sometime in August and September and early October. And then DPI will finally be able to give us where it actually is.
That's super helpful. Yeah.
And yeah, a part of us amending budgets like we do, in some regards, we are doing our piece to make sure that the budget we submit to DPI is as accurate as possible because that budget's used for calculating equalized aid.
And then just one other clarification. I know this happened last year. So right away from the start on slide nine about the little-to-know of tax increases for property owners, you're speaking respective to the district's specific piece of the property tax bill. Because I think that was misunderstood last season, despite, I think, our best efforts to dialogue around that. Someone's tax bill may increase overall, but our district's portion, we are attempting to keep as consistent as possible by adjusting the mill rate. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I, there are, there are two ways that, any, Jen, to your point, this is really complicated stuff. There are, in my mind, are two ways that folks can open up that tax bill and feel a little disgruntled if they read in the headlines that it's our goal to have average tax impact on our end to be essentially flat. And just as you mentioned, that really comes in two spots. If the other taxing authorities raise their levy, not in proportion with that new construction. And the other piece is, we have six municipalities that all are assessing property values on different cycles, and the Department of Revenue stepping in to apply something called equalized property value or fair market value. And that's an added complexity separate from equalized state aid. The Department of Revenue steps in to try to make sure that municipalities don't artificially deflate the value of their properties to protect their isolated municipalities from taxing authorities, us. So the Department of Revenue steps in and takes a look at if your equalized, if your property value, your assessed property value is $250,000, but the average house or property in that municipality is selling for 33% more than the municipality's assessed value. The Department of Revenue steps in and applies a ratio called equalized or fair market value to your house. And that's actually what we tax against and things that are not out of our control. So we know Pittsburgh, last year in particular, felt the Department of Revenue stepping in, applying that ratio. And our Pittsburgh residents last year saw a bigger jump in taxes than Verona residents did. And we even had board members that I think could have compared tax bills. And looking at a few of you, some of us that saw flat taxes or tax bills go down and others that saw bump. And that's out of our control. What you can control as the board is the overall levy. And the rest of it, in terms of what happens with the Department of Revenue and everything else, is out of our control.
I appreciate that reframing. I just think it's super helpful to hear that over again. Just, yeah, thank you.
And when it gets to taxing time, again, we build out a suite of resources on our website. We'll update those again when property tax bills come out here in a few months.
Thanks.
Back to the equalized value summary, and I just find this interesting. We've gone from 2019, 20 to under, from, you know, under $5 billion of property value to our estimate right now of just under $7.5 billion. So that's a five-year period of time and us picking up several billion dollars in property value, which is, which is unheard of in terms of how quickly our tax base is growing. Here is our levy summary. And you can see here that the, essentially, the main place we are picking up levy this upcoming year is really in debt service. So you can see that second line there, referendum debt service, and that is Fund 39. It's our proposal to the school board that, just like we've done in the past, that we essentially over-levy on Fund 39. We will bring proposals back to you later on this year regarding what likely won't be a Fund 39, Fund Balance Deposit. It will likely be another defeasance for us to keep mill rates flat-ish. The levy do a spot that average impact is zero, and we can continue to prepay debt fairly aggressively to save on really interest, principal and interest all the way across the board because we will be doing so much prepayment on that. The overall levy as presented tonight will go up 4.9%. There's a different way for us to break down the levy in terms of where a, where $100,000 of home value is being applied. You see, the majority of that is applied towards operating our school district. But because we are running out of, we really maxed out the $19 million because it's happening in a transfer, the additional levy this year to cast with our expanded tax base really is going towards debt payment. The board will be, will remember this last year except for Christopher, and will certainly answer questions if you have them. The state, when they passed the last two-year budget, increased the state aid pot, but also increased something called a school levy credit pot of money fairly substantially. And it does have an impact on the Verona Area School District, where we are predicting essentially a $1 million tax credit is applied to our tax base to offset property taxes at the state level. It isn't aid that we get. It's aid essentially to offset property taxes, and we are factoring that in to the net neutral or net average tax impact. And this should look familiar to the school board, because we applied the same method last year. The 2324 budget, we had an overall levy increase of 8.6%. This year, we're down to 4.9%, 3% to 4% of that. We'll find all those numbers out in October, get gobbled up in that new construction. And the final piece, we do have a very good idea on, would be a 1% cover on that school levy credit. So we are predicting, on average, tax impact is zero.
Chad, just to talk about this slide really quick and make sure I understand it, make sure that the public understands. When we talk about a 4.9% increase in our levy, what this slide shows, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that 4.9% isn't made up by increasing the levy from taxpayer, from current homeowners by charging them more or taxing them more. The 4.9% increase in our levy is from new construction, which is new property on our tax rolls, and from that school levy tax credit. So even though our levy's going up by 4.9%, that doesn't mean that our taxpayers are paying 4.9% more. In fact, they're paying a little bit less on average than they paid last year.
That's exactly right. And you can see it, I think we do a longer look back at historic mill rates in our budget book. But Joe, this will be the lowest taxing ratio in the form of our mill rate that we've had in a couple of decades. So 1099 means that you are paying a lower percentage of property tax related to the school district than you have in a couple of decades because we continue to keep that mill rate shut down. So that's exactly right, Joe. Some key dates ahead of us. I took a screenshot out of the budget book. The three that the board has to keep an eye on would be, we're going to ask for your approval of the finalized budget book on September 9. We will have a budget hearing, an annual meeting, on September 23. Then we kind of sit for a little bit and wait till we get a whole bunch of numbers, including third Friday count, final equalized property values, all coming in from the state. And we will finalize the levy. Our final mill rate will likely not be 1099. We'll have some slightly different numbers as our best guess. And we will finalize the levy on the 21st. Any other questions or comments?
I think I have another one, but anyone else? I feel like I kind of, okay. How does my question come together? So I was, so back at slide 11. And just anticipating the budget shortfall we have for next year. I'm trying, I'm admittedly thinking big picture because, again, just how gritty and granular this all gets. But how are we thinking about the lowering of the mill rate anticipating that budget shortfall, watching our Fund 10 balance? Like, how do those, maybe those three things in particular kind of weigh out with each other? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if we're going to lower the mill rate, but we're anticipating the shortfall, how do we kind of remedy those things and what does that potentially look like? Because I know we've committed to not doing this big oscillation of the mill rate for folks. So just thoughts about that?
Yeah, so in fiscal year '26, if these assumptions held true, and there's one number on here that, quite frankly, I think is fairly conservative. In particular, the $200 per pupil. The governor passed a budget that said the next 400 years is 325. That there are already things happening in the courts to try to overturn that. And who knows what happens with our state lawmakers over the next election cycle. But that number, as long as Governor Devers is in place, is likely 325 for next year. Every, if you use round numbers of us having 6,000 students, every hundred dollars, every hundred dollars of permission we get per pupil is a $600,000 increase to our operating permission. Jen, back to your question. The budget shortfall that we've outlined here is operating shortfall. We have plenty of taxing permission to continue to pay debt. In fact, if we have a tighter budget as far as operating permission goes next year, and the board continues to prioritize flat-ish levy, the only way for us to keep the mill rate flat is to continue to prepay debt. So, because we won't get any more permission for operating the school district, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, if the board decided we want, and you guys had that permission right now, you could tag, you could pull out $4 million out of this next year's levy. We're recommending to you, we don't yo-yo at the mill rate and that we continue to defees debt. We're approaching $8 million in interest savings from the work this board has done just over the last four years. And we recommend to continue that strategy moving forward. But really, Jen, the only place for us to kind of mess around with that levy for next year is debt management. Because we're going to start to really feel the state imposed revenue limit because we don't have our own revenue limit anymore because the operating referendum we've gone through. Good question. I have something to kind of add. Are you done?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So it makes me think of the fund balance, because it's kind of our buffer, our savings account. And I see it slowly being drawn down. I guess, what's the sweet spot where we want that to typically be most years? How are we thinking about doing, you know, managing that, doing, need to manage it? What are the things, good things to think about as we move forward?
Yeah, so our, Juan Carlos, if you want, we actually have a Fund Balance slide on the property acquisition portion of the slideshow. If you're okay with actually using that art into the slide, you can go into Fund Balance. Any other questions? Perfect. So we will be, we'll, we will be back to the board to ask for permission to pass our draft budget book. We have some minor edits that we will make. It will not be upper-left staple next time you see it. It will be bound nicely to folder open, have a budget book. We're excited about that. And kudos to Pete, Michael, Colin, Marcy, and Karen for putting that document together. It's really nice. All right. Got to see you. Moving on to land acquisition. Okay. So just a lot of this is going to be?
Anything other questions about it to make first?
Not for me. Any other questions about our draft budget? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to property acquisition. As we mentioned the last time we met with the school board, tonight, we're going to ask for a board vote related to the property assemblage in Pittsburgh. Some of these are review slides, but we'll go on to make sure, again, that they were publicly available as we work ahead towards the board vote. We're going to do a quick review in background. We'll do this at a very high level. We'll do really, in particular, process. do really in particular process and timeline at the end, and I have some proposed language for the school board tonight to vote on. Two weeks ago, we went through this for a growing school district. The next decade, we expect 1,000 plus more students in our school district. Our tax base and enrollment are reflecting the fact that we are growing, both in terms of equalized property value and the number of students who attend our school district. We believe that within the next couple of years, potentially even next year this time, we're going to need to have some serious conversations around where all of our elementary school students will attend school, and that will likely mean conversations around a new elementary school. And if we move forward with the board vote, as we're recommending tonight, we'll have a couple of options in terms of where that next school goes. Again, I mentioned to the board, really this is our keystone slide, and I think is worthy repeating. We believe this is in line with what we 12 in terms of very good long-range planning that a district administration and a school board should be doing. We've got Pittsburgh students who have historically been under-stirred in the neighborhood. We are targeting this land acquisition. This Pittsburgh property is surrounded in a donut by largely developed properties, and this opportunity may not exist if we decided not to move forward with it this evening. We believe elementary school sites will be needed for this school district into the foreseeable future. The South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Planning Team is moving along. That's a kind of west lacy road in Pittsburgh. This school board should not be surprised if we're having conversations around a school site there within the next couple of years in terms of us buying property. There's the potential of that being built out over the next decade and producing enough elementary school students for us to build another school. Pittsburgh is growing rather quickly. Elementary school sites are going to be needed in the future. We believe this will be a valuable asset for our taxpayers. It's possible for us to do this without going to referendum, and that's a big deal. We've set the stage for this over the last three years. What we've done with our fund balance, Juan Carlos has this question, we will shrink our reliance on yellow bus transportation. This property does have an improved site that we will use temporarily when we purchase it, and gives us two viable options for elementary school sites, and we will need more than two moving into the future if and when our school district continues to grow. This is a, just a rough scale of where things are, that's just a Google slide, we doing a little quick art on there, but I think you can gain, you know where it is in terms of relation to target ID in the interstate intersection of McKee and Verona. This was another really important slide, we produced this with the school board voting close session and open session. There are 560 elementary school students that live 1.25 miles from this site. That neighborhood's been producing those students for decades. Those 560 students ride yellow buses to all of our elementary schools and have forever, and this site would give us the possibility of at least some of those students being fortunate enough to walk to a neighborhood elementary school. Reviewed this with the board at our last meeting. If we were to acquire this site, we'd have, again, right in line with, quite frankly, Shoder Creek, the number of students who could potentially walk to this new school site if we decided to build this elementary school. These are growth projections out of that neighborhood. 62 more students than the ones that attend there right now are projected to be there by 2035, so this is not an aging neighborhood that will stop producing students, this will produce students into the future. Here's the long-range plan, this is clip art from the city of Pittsburgh in terms of what's happening in the very near future directly in that neighborhood. 350 multifamily units will begin construction as early as this year, so the students will continue to come. We talked about yellow bus transportation savings, and we do believe that this is a real factor in terms of both bus driver shortages and long-range savings for our school district. Here's the seven different parcels, broken into four different property owners that we're going to ask the board for permission to vote on this evening. There's the totals that we shared with the school board at our last regular meeting for a total of $8.3 million and change to purchase this assembled parcel. Juan Carlos, let's spend a little bit of time on fund balance, and I do think it's important. This is actually, I think, a very timely slide. So we have board policy that requires us to stay 10% of our overall operating budget for next year, that's $100 million. So we would need $11 million of fund balance to adhere to our school board policy, and we are well above that. The last six or seven years, we've continued to build our fund balance, and we've continued to tell the school board that we believe fund balance should be used for timely and important one-time purchases that will benefit the school district, either in the form of a purchase like the curriculum materials that we bought this last year, or land, which has value to the school district and will into the foreseeable future, either as a school site or potentially an asset we could sell if down the road we decided our long-range facilities work took us in a different direction. So these are conservative estimates that built into our budget, and it's in the budget of Juan Carlos. We would be at 23, almost $24 million of fund balance that is still surpassing the fund balance that existed just in 2122. So we made a couple of very large deposits, really from us having operating permission that we didn't put to the use in terms of salary and benefits of people. And the main reason we didn't do that is we were preparing for a tough budget for next year. So the fund balance deposit we made just out of this last year, which is $3 million, about $3 million, affords us to have the ability to do this. Juan Carlos, you have other questions related to the fund balance? I think I kind of heard you at least asking the open-ended question around filling in budget shortfall with the insurance policy we had in the form of fund balance. That is, most of the time, that strategy we wouldn't recommend if it's heading to staffing. If there's a one-time purchase, John Remmer says, we need a, we have a roof that's hemorrhaging in it, we don't have it in our budget to take care of a roof. I might recommend to the school board, let's take a look at this roof, whatever it is, pull that fund balance. But most of the time, we would not recommend heading in the direction of staffing in terms of the number of staff or compensation increases, because that is money that we build into that would be an ongoing expense, and this is really one-time money out of a savings account. So we'll have to get, we would, Pete and I would do work with the budget and our teachers' union and the school board to identify recurring expenditures that potentially can be taken out of next year's budget to get to a spot that is balanced. That's really the work we'll have ahead of us when we finally go in happens with the next two-year budget cycle.
Thank you.
Good bet. Any other questions? Reminder, I just dropped this back in, the board has seen this already. I think this could be a pretty cool little elementary school site, the way that we would own really an entire city block there. Work ahead for us, there is a will to know where for the school board, you just have to vote yes tonight, and then Pete and I got to get to work. So we have four different property owners, different versions of property options and offers, and we've already done survey work and environmental work on all of these properties, but if we get permission from the school board tonight, we would start to move forward with one by one, exposing on these properties and having the Verona area school district listed as the owner on the deed to all these parcels, and we're excited to do that work. So Jen, we put this out there, and this would obviously be up to the school board if we decide to move in this direction tonight, but that would be our recommended language when you guys would call it a vote. Other questions or comments? But that is it from Pete and Chad.
Any questions or anything on the surface while we have the team here around the property acquisition proposal? So then, in line with just the rearrangement of the agenda, we'll sneak into public comment just to elevate any thoughts that have come in. Lori, any in-person public comments that I'm not aware of? Okay, so we did receive one over email that I'd like to read out loud. The comment says, "I would like to register my excited and wholehearted support of the proposed purchase of land in Pittsburgh for a future VASD school site. A third of our city's children attend Verona area public schools and enjoy a high-quality education delivered by some of the best educators in this state. While these students find home in this extended community, I am so excited at the potential for an added school in a Pittsburgh neighborhood. We know that kids do better in school when they are able to access facilities, participate in extracurriculars, and live deeper in the community with their immediate neighbors and friends. We know kids also thrive when their families feel connected to the broader school community. Having another school in Pittsburgh would give our children and families even more opportunities to integrate their school and home lives, further blending their Pittsburgh and VASD communities. We are so grateful for all three school districts that serve our great city, and as a city council member and a mom of a wildcat, I am thrilled to see access extending to all the children in my Pittsburgh community. I urge you to approve the Pittsburgh land proposal in front of you tonight," and that was sent in by Nicole Laffodari. So that is public comment, so then we'll go ahead and move into board action. The first thing, of course, being this potential approval of the proposal that's been shared by the administration. Any further discussion or commentary before potential vote?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about what a unique opportunity this is. You don't normally get this much property available for a school district to purchase in an already developed area. Usually, you purchase land on the outskirts of town and you wait for people to build around it, and what's so great here is, this is a wonderful location in an already developed part of our district where there's already a need, and it doesn't mean we're 100% going to build the school there, but this gives us options that we can consider down the road, and even if we don't, it's a great asset for the district to hold and can sell for a profit in the future if our long-range planning changes. So this is such a great opportunity that I'm strongly in favor of.
Thanks, Joe.
I'll follow up on that. I mean, I think it's a testament also to the work that's gone into it and, you know, the whole admin team, but you guys especially like negotiating and working to put this together, like assembling lots like this is not an easy task, and so I think it's really, really great, that work that's gone into it to kind of have this opportunity before us, so.
Say, as keeping the community cohesion within that area is really important, and will be a great blessing for this family that we're in that bit, so actually, yeah, love this project.
Well, my gratitude again as well for just all of the work that your team has put in with these four separate owners and the conversations, even alongside the city of Pittsburgh, right? Just the partnerships and conversations that we're not doing this in isolation, but just in terms of the broader Pittsburgh community as well. Yeah, I'm also very excited. So, if I miss any other comments, I would accept a motion to approve the purchase of seven parcels of property in Pittsburgh as presented with a total price of $8,335,077.
So moved.
Thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Christopher, thank you. All those in favor of approving the purchase of these seven parcels in Pittsburgh as presented for the total price listed, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we move into board action, extra item, Dr. Clarity has a few things to share as well.
I'll be very thoughtful and thank our deputy superintendent, Chad, who has really been instrumental in this, in this work and this, in this project, and so many people in front of the seats and behind the scenes that have contributed to this monumental event. I want to bring us quickly back to our equity framework and just go right back to the bottom of it. And we speak in this, on our board-approved equity framework, that we acknowledge that inequity is empowered and exists in our system, such that some individuals on the basis of identities face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. Acknowledgements of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity, and as those words hopefully resonate in power and then, most recently, in the action that this board just took, you know, we are very proud to promote this equity framework across the state and across the nation many times, and as we learned from one of our board members took it all the way to Paris and took it to that, to that level. I'm often asked, you know, how do we hold true to the very bottom of our equity framework, and how do we make that come to life? And so I always want to take this opportunity to thank this board by doing the very thing that people ask of how, and it's through the action and the commitment and recognizing that when identified dynamics that we have brought before you exist in our system, that there is a willingness and a commitment to undo those, so it's going to give, extend this out to this Board of Education to holding true to what you said to this community and what you said when we built this equity framework and bring into life through resources and action and your wholehearted commitment to serve every child in our district. So with that, I want to say thank you for the historic moment for the Verona area school district. We have to put it on the calendar and mark it as a holiday because we just created a true reason to celebrate for the longevity of the Verona area school district, so thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I kind of do feel the energy of this, and just, and Meredith, you shared this also earlier, just past work and past boards and just the opportunity that really came to light after attempts in the past to kind of prioritize the years open, it just feels really, really exciting, really exciting. All right. Okay, so we'll continue then through board action, so we're shifting to results policy three, our wellbeing monitoring report. Guessing we'll hear from some of the team to just help support our reflections as a board.
People.
What? Yeah, let's do it. Wellbeing seems like the great thing to talk about after that, right? Because that was something. Greetings, team. Thanks for being here to give us some information about R3.
Absolutely. So tonight, I do want to introduce, who is the principal of Stoner Prairie, and then we have our director of people services, who is Adam Zinchon, but in reverse, so. Glad to have both of them here tonight, who are going to be serving as, serving to share information with us about R3 and R4. So R3 is wellbeing, and just to kind of remind you all, we did share this information with you all last week for your review, so we will not go over every indicator, however, we are prepared to answer questions about any and all of the indicators, but it will be, the VASD Board of Education values the knowledge and intuitive skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, engage and help enhancing physical activity, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish, maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. The VASD Board of Education expects teaching and learning to include intentional instruction and the knowledge and skills necessary to promote lifelong wellbeing. So tonight, just to kind of draw your attention to the first indicator, which is specific to SGP, and that is the only indicator in this monetary report that speaks specifically to any like statistical or quantifiable data. All the other indicators tie directly to our culture and climate surveys, so I've asked Mr. Zinchon if he would just give you all some background and some context specific to that indicator.
Yeah, so in our reporting, we look at two things. We've written our indicators very specifically to look not just at students meeting benchmarks, making risk benchmarks using the STAR assessment, which is basically looking at, you know, the students that are scoring in a way that is not showing them at risk of not meeting standards. Moving forward, one of the things we'll be exploring is looking at proficiency with STAR, which is predictive of how students will do on things like forward assessment, or looking at ACT, pre-ACT, things like that. And so we look at how students are achieving that way. The other way we look, though, is at SGP, so that's the student growth percentile, and that compares any student at grade levels' performance against other students in that grade level on that bigger assessment. in that grade level on that particular assessment, whether that's math or early literacy or start reading with other students at that grade level that have a similar score. So if you scored a 694 on STAR in fall, it's comparing a fourth grader, you're looking at other fourth graders with a similar score of 694. And STAR uses all of the students that take this assessment nationwide to compare how students are growing over time. In the past, STAR only reported between one test administration and the next, so between fall and winter, winter and spring. Beginning last year, they started to look at a full academic, it was a much better measure of how students are performing over time. And so when we report this to you as a board, you get a number percentage, and it's really important to understand that percentage. A student individually gets that percentage based on how they scored. And so if I scored a 694, you know, I jump over to 704, I'm scoring, how am I scoring relative to my peers? I may be scoring and making more growth than 75% of my peers, and so my SGP will be 75. We feel that's a really important measure because it looks at students all across our district and how they're growing. We may have a student that may be scoring at a proficient level, and they regress, and they're still proficient. Are we truly serving our students? Similarly, we may have a student who may be at high risk, but they've made amazing growth, they're not scoring at a proficient level, or they're not meeting the benchmark yet, but we need to celebrate that, and SGP controls for both of those things. And so when we report SGP to the board, we're not looking at a mean or average score of all of our students' SGP's, we're looking at how many students are scoring at typical or high growth. And the way Renaissance looks at that is an SGP of zero to about 35 is low growth, 35 to 65 is typical growth, and then 65 to 99, you're scoring higher than 99% of your peers, that's high growth. And so when you report, we're looking at percentages of students who are scoring at typical... Thoughts, questions?
Percentages of percentages, of percentages, right. Just to recap, okay.
So yes, we are comparing, we're looking at this measure, we're comparing students in one test administration, one year, to students in another. At the same time, no doubt it's perfect, and so we look at the health of our education system. We want students to have a high SGP. We want a lot of students demonstrating high growth and a lot of students meeting benchmarks. And we trust that as students have higher SGP's, we can trust that over time, the longer they're in our system, the more likely they will be to meet risk benchmarks or...
And I think that seems to echo the thoughts that this board has shared about wanting to understand the story of growth for students as well and not just completely obsess over proficiency, but really recognizing growth that students are making to get to that place.
So part of this monitoring report, when we think about wellbeing, it was designed so that we look at students' academic wellbeing, we also look at their social and emotional wellbeing, and so I'm going to point your attention to R3.1.5, and that is the indicator that speaks specifically to human growth and development. And so I just wanted to, in line with this indicator, give you all an update. A few months ago, at a previous board meeting, you all gave us the approval to go ahead with identifying potential candidates to serve on the Human Growth and Development Committee, which is the direct, under the direction of you all. And so as we speak, there is an ad in the Verona Press, and we are working to identify, based on people self-selecting and self-identifying their interest in this committee. And so today, we've had eight additional people from the committee to express their interest in serving on this committee. So the goal is by the September board meeting to present to you all a list of candidates that would, could potentially make up the committee with you all's approval.
Did that ad go in the Pittsburgh Star as well?
No, it only went in the Verona Press.
Okay. Do you want to consider having it be in the Pittsburgh Star as well?
Based on you all's recommendation, absolutely.
I would, I would recommend that, just trying to partner with both of those entities. I know they overlap and share somewhat, but yeah, especially in just being mindful to the, the Pittsburgh Star only runs once a month. So looking carefully at when we think we have deadlines set for choosing folks and when the next run may be of the Star.
I mean, our deadline, we have some leeway with our deadline, so to ensure that we have representation from all members in our community, certainly with you all's permission, we can identify when that date is and get that ad for them at the Pittsburgh Star.
Thanks.
To clarify, the original ad was, was approved by the board, what are that leadership? Do you want to see the Pittsburgh Star ad again, or just, I'm saying it would be duplicated for the Pittsburgh audience?
Yeah, I'm okay if it's just duplicated onward. Thoughts from anyone else?
Good.
Yeah.
I'll work with our PI, so we can get that done.
So it's actually the same company that's asked to push it over to the other paper?
Yes. So that means that, just kind of want to reiterate, and just kind of sum up the work of this monitoring report. While shifts in our data, you'll see minimal increase of 1% to 2% in many of the culture and climate questions, but what we do want to point out is that while those data points are minimal... Yeah. While those data points are minimal, as we have worked with our previous survey instrument producers, one of the things we do want to point out is statistically or practical significance when we're thinking about statistical data. And the acknowledgement that additional data points, as we're moving ahead and working to develop other instruments, we will be cognizant of that. So I'll pause, that's the end of R3. Would you like somebody to go on to R4 and then you all discuss together?
I think with the agenda listed separately, I think my preference would be to dialogue and finalize R3, if anyone has any adjustments or thoughts about that. I mean, I think some of the conversation may have overlapped, but I do think there's some distinction. So if the board is comfortable, we want to spend some time on R3 specifically and lift up any questions we may have for the team before we move it into board discussion and vote.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking at the monitoring report itself, and there's a line at the top that says, "Results certification language above approved during the 12/4/23 BOE meeting." I'm having trouble remembering what we changed at that meeting. Does, does anyone recall?
Who's the valent to me, please?
Privileges.
Oh, I, that's, that's what that's referring to, okay. Got it. Now I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other specific questions to our leadership team that is here to help us process R3? Doing real weight time and eye contact here just to be sure.
I have one other question, I'm trying to decide whether it's more for us to discuss or for...
Sure.
But I, R3.1.2, indicator one, refers to a question that's asked on the climate survey of students six through 12. And two years in a row now, we've not asked that question. Are, do we have plans to ask that in the future, or should we just abandon that indicator?
We did an inquiry to the tool that was, to the company that produces the tool, and there was a refusal to ask the question, and so we don't have the ability to make them do it, and we are transitioning away from company, I kind of feel.
Okay.
Interesting.
So there's, if there was the inquiry that I could ask.
Multiple times.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with this, it just seems strange to continue to list it as one of our indicators when we're not doing it.
I have a comment, just in general, and I think maybe it's something we should take to the workshop in the future, but around 3.1.5, physical development wellness, it's, it's very focused on human growth and development. And I was just thinking, where would, where were the results policies that would be more reflective of our holistic wellness approach? Physical, nutritional, mental health, where would those exist? And do we want to think about what that might look like to be more aligned with kind of strategic framework, which is more holistic, mental, mental health and wellness?
Yeah, regarding to OE.
I don't know if I'm articulating it.
I know, and we were, so I was thinking about that too. The OE side of that, right, in terms of operationally, what are we presenting in front of students, but then from the results side, right, how are we seeing the impact to students for their physical and emotional wellbeing? So, right, from a student results standpoint, outcome to students, not just what are we putting out, but what is the impact to students? And is there, is there a pull-through? Just to maybe take a tangent and pull through on what you were elevating, Juan Carlos, just feeling again the, the density of this results policy. I mean, if you tease out even just 3.1.5 that you're surfacing right here, the number of things that we could be talking about related to students' physical and physical development and wellness, there's so much there. And I, I love the fact that it feels like our district is on the precipice of something really new in terms of what we're trying to measure about success for students. So I recognize that there's just so much newness to all of that. I don't know what some of that is. It's a huge challenge, I think, that we're putting in front of this leadership team and for ourselves to think about, what are we measuring? So kind of to what I'm hearing you say is, how do we measure what the physical wellbeing is of our students? What does that potentially look like? So not to kind of take what you were saying, but that's just something that I think of so broadly. This, this is so big and so powerful, not to minimize what the district is attempting to do already, but how do we just keep just challenging what this could really look like? And how does it get measured? I don't, I don't know. But I just appreciate that we're in this really, just so interesting space, that we value this dialogue and this type of results policy.
So overall, it would fall under OE10 on the operations side. I think to Jen's point, when you think about measuring, I would say outside, outside influence that are beyond straight instructional practices on student performance, you know, how do you deduce if it was our focus on disciplinary literacy, specifically the content that produced a higher outcome, or the increase in safe space, or the increase in mental health resources that led to that, that outcome? There's, there's multiple variables that impact whether a student's, student's performance increases over time, so I, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we talk to our community and the board about the full package of things that can influence and how do we try to improve, improve those. But I, I can't fairly say that if our, when our math scores go up next year, I'm just going to call it out, that they, well, they increased that because we, was it disciplinary literacy, or was it, so, or was it mental health supports that, that allowed those spaces where we're discussing, that allowed, allowed, that I, I don't know, I can tell you which, what those factors or combination led to those results.
So maybe it's more of a reflection of the resources that we're providing to support all the variables that can impact that final result.
Yeah, and it's also listening to the voices of our youth when they tell, let us know what's most impacting them and trying to provide rationalization. You'll hear from, from Miss Adele, from some of the, her fantastic leadership moves over at, at Stone and Prairie, when Anita Rose, the leadership moves will show, here's how additional resources or supports were put in place, and here was the outcome on, on our students.
Yeah. That kind of brings to full circle how John was pointing out, or every time you get leadership, you summarize how much that helps us in that picture of what's leading to this progress, or what's coming into the trajectory, what we're doing about the trajectory that we want to go into. So, yeah, I just wanted to raise that, I don't know if he answered this, it's just a wondering...
No, it's a, it's a great question, it's, it's one of those things that challenge my hair follicles. And I, you know, I don't know.
And it has been part of our discussion when we've talked about, like, some of the interesting ways that we want to create that holistic data point for students, that it almost feels like there's this interconnectedness between these results policies too, to your point, right? If I have a greater sense of wellbeing and safety, then do I achieve better in math class? You know, I mean, how the interconnectedness and where, where are we siloing, where maybe there's ways to just kind of gleam a more holistic vision of these results policies? You know, I, I don't know, right? If our splitting hairs in these conversations is because everything seems to be landing separately, but it, in reality, it's not separate, it's all interconnected. So just to get, to appreciate that your team continues to brainstorm, I continue to be excited about the brainstorming, that we're all really building this together with the results for our students and their overall wellbeing and impact at the center.
And, and just to be transparent, I don't know that numerical investment is always going to be the way to demonstrate growth, because, you know, when you, if you look at our data, and then we will add those things, we could get the company to answer questions as far as how do we perform relative to other districts, like you have a really high score, is it ever going to get any higher? I don't know, in some areas where 65%, that is normed high, is it ever going to hit 70? Is it ever going to hit 80? I don't think so.
Well, shall we? Yeah, I just, I get excited with, with these results policies for this type of conversation. I just think it's really...
Chad, I have a comment, I don't know if this is the right time for it, but it's something we've talked about before, and I know that we've, we've had conversations about kind of, and you were hinting at this a little, Jen, about the, the way, the way these indicators are written now is maybe not the right way to, to use data, and that it, we don't think it's telling the story we, we actually think is going on. But as I look at it, like, I have a really hard time with our current structure of our monitoring reports, understanding what the difference is between achieving reasonable progress with exceptions and reasonable progress not yet achieved. I mean, if I'm just looking at this report on face value, almost every indicator, I mean, there's some that we've hit, but the vast majority of the indicators were not hit. Now, I don't have a problem with that because I don't think those indicators are designed in a way they're telling the story that I think is actually happening. So it's not that I, I'm actually concerned about the results, but with this structure that we have, I don't understand what the difference is between those two categories.
Can I blow up Joe's comment? I think, again, I'm not sure if this is the right time. Time to move into the board.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know if we had done that yet.
Yeah, I think the goal is to have a results report that tells us how our students are doing, you know, and I'm not sure that I understand based on numbers. And I know that's, our indicators are kind of constrained by just available data, but I think it's hard to tell, it's hard to understand the story when these are our... I'm not even sure how to... I think I struggle with the, you know, is a, what's the percentage, what's the weight of the percentage? What does that mean? So some are 90%, that's great, some are 50%, but I still don't really have a very good understanding of where our students at, our students are at as far as wellbeing, as far as what this indicator or this results report is, is truly measuring about our students overall. What, what's the story? And I think that's, you know, again, even if we have meets expectations, fails to meet expectations, I'm not sure that even if we were hitting the growth indicators, I would have a better understanding of truly where our kids are at. I think it's really, I think this is, again, the board has put this into place, and I think as we've gone through this, we've struggled with some of the, you know, indicators and what are meaningful indicators, maybe that's what I meant. I'm not sure that the indicators resonate as meaningful.
I completed with Joe and Meredith on, on the other thing that, you know, I, I call probably more special meetings on this one than the, the team cares to remember because, you know, to, in Joe's point, like, well, if we're purely looking at percentages, is, I would call it a neutral at best here. If we're looking at the, the moves that were made behind, behind the scenes, then that's a, something to highlight, but that's not what, that's not what was asked, you know? The indicators don't ask what are the leadership moves, and it's like, what are these, what are these specific metrics? So, are... So our, part of our goal today was also to talk about, you know, how do we bring in front of the board? How the, how the leadership moves have come to life? So there's confidence in those moves and whether their, whether monitoring report is meaning, meaning progress or not meaning progress doesn't change the power of the moves themselves. And I, you know, I guess I, yeah, it's more of an agreeance that we've, we've really shifted a lot as an organization, as an organization into action that don't always align with the metrics that we currently do.
And also we want our community to take a look at these results policies and these monitoring reports and have an understanding of where our students are situated in relation to their wellbeing. I don't know that that we've set it up where our indicators, and you guys completely have, have the line of thought about indicators. But like from the board perspective, I don't know if we have ensured that the indicators are very meaningful. How do we, how do we do that? And it's just, you know, I think, you know, John, you've talked, I think, so much about getting more of a you know, the story behind it. Is this even, does this even lend itself to these types of indicators? I don't know, but I, it's hard to, it's hard to put this forward as evidence that really tells a different story.
So I hesitate to say anything because I have tended to blow this conversation up in our workshops for a long time. I think anybody that's listened to me knows, like, I have very definite opinions about data and how it should be used. I don't think this is, I do think this is a workshop issue. I think what I would say is my understanding thus far has been that we don't own the indicators. We own the policy. If we want to talk about whether or not our policy leads to the, to the right story, I think we as a board can talk about that. If we want to talk about that the indicators don't seem to be a reasonable measure of what we're trying to get at, that's a conversation that we can have, probably in workshop. If we want to talk about taking more ownership over like some sort of large governing indicator, that would be a conversation, a large conversation for another time. Right now, I don't want to muddy the water with the, the work that's been done. I feel like these reports indicate that there have been the leadership moves and that, that there's progress being made on these indicators. And that's kind of where I like to keep this, but I do think this is a valuable conversation. I also think that these particular areas tend to be areas that are hardest to quantifiably measure. And, and so that makes it a good place for us to argue about all those things in the future. So.
Create discourse.
So, yeah. Future discourse. Future knockdown.
Can I, can I put something into the space?
Yeah, yeah.
And I am completely out of order with the agenda.
No, because we, we haven't brought it into board. This is still, we're still in shared conversation.
We get, we get off the rails. It's my favorite thing, let's do this.
You know, I, I think we're, we've gotten enough evidence around previous state versus current state in terms of indicators over, overall, probably for the last two or three months, I would say, at, at, at least. And right now, we are, we are kind of, kind of tied into, we, we are presenting things in a way that are purely built off, built off more technical than it needs to be because we're building this straight off of a calendar. You know, calendar says this date needs to be from the board, even though we haven't shifted, shifted the, the indicators to really give you the information that I think the board, board is seeking. Can we begin with at least either pausing or bringing the calendar back to front and say, hey, can we not be so stringent on these specific days until we can kind of retweet the way that we're looking at indicators? And really provide it, provide some more solution-based responses or more of a leadership moves format to you? And not feel directly tied that this has to be done on this day because, because the calendar said that.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to, it's not going to, it's going to continue to happen because right now the calendar that was approved by the board says have this next one on this, on this next day.
Again, I think this particularly lets itself back because these are results policies. It's the end of the summer.
Yeah.
If memory serves, it was like this stuff landed here because this looked like an open spot on the calendar. And that's not a good reason, so yeah.
So with your permission, I would like to probably maybe bring the calendar back in front of you and just look at some, some days and then be able to work off workshops and things like, things like that. And come before you probably with a reformulated way of looking at indicators that's not mandated strictly off compliance of the calendar at this point.
Yeah, I would think philosophically, that's probably the last thing this board would want to do is talk about results of our students based on a date instead of philosophically how we feel about making sense of the data and the conversation.
The tricky part is, formality wise, the board owns that calendar.
Right, yeah. I'm comfortable with a draft being proposed if that seems reasonable to the board as well. I mean, right, you and your team have the greatest insight as to where some of that lands logically within the calendar year. So, yeah.
I would also add that if you're considering drafting something, in the past, we were wary of loading too much work on a particular day. And so we wanted to spread it out. I think with a lot of these things happening more in the background now and really just the executive summaries being presented, it's not as big a problem to load things on particular days. So if we're like handling a lot of results at the end of the school year, for example, I can see that working.
Especially if we're trying to do a little bit more of this in terms of results rather than.
Yeah, and just bringing awareness to our team that's working, oh, we need to open up our schools. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, but also in fairness to the team is really wanting to think about our indicators in a far more strategic way. This is because we know more, we're just better at understanding what our systems are providing. I think the time to have those deep conversations coming from the board, have those deep conversations and not have to worry about, well, we can't even talk about it right now because the calendar says it's on the A B. They will give us far more fluidity to, I would say a better product, the original one to serve its purpose for the new, newer product.
Yeah, I would hear for learning. Learning indicators, as we learn how to do it.
But did, did exactly what we said, we said they're going to set a baseline. And they've set a baseline for what works and what doesn't work. Now we know where to go from there.
Good, thank you.
Well, let's still wrap R3 and see what happens then as we shift to R4. So we've received and discussed the, the monitoring report, results policy 3. So I'll accept a motion to approve the report as presented and we can just see if there's any additional discussion around reasonable progress. Is there a motion to bring the monitoring report into board discussion? Thanks, Juan Carlos, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, thank you. Any further discussion in terms of our upcoming vote then on reasonable progress? Which I appreciate, Joe, that you've kind of elevated the thoughts around that. So anything else that you want to surface right now before taking a vote for the report is presented? No, I'm good at wait time. All those decades of teaching, you can make things really uncomfortable if you want. All right, well, there is a motion by Joe and a second by John to approve R3 as presented, achieving reasonable progress with exceptions. All those in favor signify with a I. Any opposed? Okay, R3 has been approved. So moving to R4, obviously we've shared some conversation that may parallel, so I hope that guides at least what you may want to share, Dr. Hawkins.
It will. So R4 is members of a diverse and global society. And the gist of this is each student contributes to an effective and diverse community. The VASP Board of Education values students bringing a wide range of interests, backgrounds, and experiences to support our community. And so what we want to highlight is our key leadership moves in I made in R4 is that we, last year, we were able to share with you that we had identified a restorative practices lead. That person is in the name of Sealan Walsh. And so last year, we were also able to share that she was going to be working specifically with one school. And that was Stoner Prairie. So this year, we've asked the principal of Stoner Prairie to come and just share anecdotal accounts of what and how restorative practices have impacted her school and then the things that she's going to do moving into this year. I also want to point out before she gets started speaking is that last year we had one school that actively jumped in, beat first, all go here, we're going to do it. And so this year, we have four schools that have committed to working with Sealan Walsh. Also want to share with you that last year, we had 150 staff that were, received restorative practices training over the whole year. And so we're excited to say that we will have four schools and their staff, or a portion of their staff that will participate in this training. So I'm going to pause and I'm going to let the principal of Stoner Prairie share the journey that her school participated in and their work with restorative practices.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. So I really appreciate the conversation you just had because I kind of agree that data tells us one thing, right? And it doesn't tell us all of it. And so I appreciate the opportunity to share a little street data about what restorative practice looked like at Stoner Prairie last year. So we really worked with Sealan to train a team of student services staff, but also our interventionist. And our, we had a team of about eight that I started training at the beginning of the school year. And those eight then met with our staff. All of our staff members were divided into circle groups and they were cross-grade levels. So you might have a K teacher and a third grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher. And they met in circle groups once a month using the practices of restorative circles. And it allowed us to really do what I call the hard work of this work, right? We all have the hard work, we know the curriculum, we know the schedule, we know the pieces of that. But this is really talking about how we do the work. And so we met once a month in those circle groups. We did professional development around equity one of the Wednesdays. Then we met two weeks later in our circle groups to kind of process what we had read and how that impacts our work. That is one way we use to start a practice at Stoner Prairie. We also work with humans and we are humans. And there are times when we are, we have big feelings around the approach that we're going to use. Disagreements, different approaches. When that happened, we also used restorative circles to kind of help us be able to move forward in a way where we felt like our voice was heard, but we also did what was best and always keep these students at the center of that work. I have been a principal for about, I think this is nine years. I've been in education for 29. And I will tell you that this move was the most powerful move that I think I've ever had the privilege of supporting my staff through. When I started this, as you can imagine, I have a little over 70 staff. There were some people that are like, I don't do the feeling stuff, right? Like this is too touchy feely for me, no thanks. But we did it and we moved forward and some of those very staff have asked that we continue to do circles. And they've changed the way they approach the work. I have one staff member who actually reached out and recently said she wants to do the training this year because we are, we are planning to send, our next move is to move into, from staff practice into what does this look like in our classrooms for our scholars? That's a pretty powerful statement because I've seen initiatives, I've seen programs, I've seen packages come and go over 28 years. But this work is the work that I've seen change people and how they approach scholars. So we had to do that work first because in order to truly do equity work or in order to truly change the way that we have been doing the work. And, and if you know Stoner Prairie, you know, I have seen teachers that have been there for 25, 26, 30 years. You have to think about a really strong why to change your practice, okay? And so this year, we feel like we are now poised as a school-based leadership team. We've discussed the importance of how does this look in our classrooms? What does this mean for our scholars? We've been doing morning meetings. Morning meetings are a, a practice that has been used. It's, you know, community gathering at the beginning of the day, check in, et cetera. But we haven't really done that with a restorative lens. And we're in a place where we want to do that. We want to take another look at how we're doing those morning meetings with our scholars. And how we do that, what we bring this new refined lens and what it's meant for us as professionals to have that opportunity is what we want our scholars to experience. So this year, I'm spending one entire grade level team to the training with Sealan Walsh as well as a few of our new staff so that we can continue to do circles as a staff, but we can also think about how it looks on that one grade level. And then what does that mean across other grade levels as we move forward? It feels like the right next step for us as we move the work forward. I'm trying to think if I missed anything that we've talked about. It's a really powerful tool. I've been really filled with gratitude for Sealan because not only did she provide the training, but we've consulted with her every month to talk about what does our circle process look like? And if you've never been in a circle process, I encourage people to do it because it is deeply meaningful ways of thinking about how we do your work. We tend to get into, especially in, in schools, right? We do this, we do this, we have a schedule, we follow it. This provides us with an opportunity to take a breath and really think about what does that actually look like when we read the article? What does that actually look like for our kids? What does that mean for us as the people providing that support? And you all know, education is stressful work and it also helps us give common language to the way to move forward. So I think if you want to talk about numbers, I think our climate data certainly looked, reflected some positive growth in the right direction. But to be honest with you, the data that matters to me is what I see in here in my hallways for not only my, my, my staff, but my scholars. And I can't remember who said it to me. It actually might have been Jen or you, Dr. Hawkins, when we did our end of year walkthrough. But somebody said, happy teachers, may happy kids. It's kind of simple and there's no quantifiable data. I can't say 80%, 90%. But there is a palpable feeling that has resulted. And I think that this move in, in bringing restorative practice to Stoner Prairie has made a difference. And I'm excited about diving even deeper into this work as we continue forward.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, well, pause. If any of you all have any specific questions about her account and the journey and the work that has happened at Stoner Prairie. I don't want to lose sight of the great work that they've done without allowing them to ask any questions specific to that.
I do want to, just kind of, as we're doing a progress monitoring report and really shifting to, I think now that we have more fluidity and be able to present monitoring reports in a different way, you'll see more of this direct evidence of the leadership move impact and how it's directly aligned to policy. But when we made the, we made the decision, or sorry, we're thinking about the FTE or the allocation that would be, doesn't, that would be for the start of restorative practices across the rural area school district. We all, of course, like we do with any budgetary item, understand where does it align the policy? And this is where it was directly aligned to, to, to this, to this policy. When we looked at, and we appreciate Sidell's intentionality and, and her willingness as a new leader in a new space to embrace this opportunity for restorative practice, but it was, it wasn't just happenstance that we chose to Stoner Prairie. And just be very, very transparent, that was, that was a, a move, I think, a necessary move, knowing honestly, there had been a multitude of leadership shifts there. And to no fault of any individual or that there had been a space that there had been feelings of harm. And I think harm can go in both directions. So we look at the heart of restorative practices and both the owning and knowing and understanding of harm, but also how do you build the community to have the proper spaces to dismantle the root of what's causing harm and also create spaces? root of what's causing harm and also create spaces where the harm does not occur, reoccur. This was very intentional, ensuring that A, we could pilot the great work in one space and then continue to matriculate it through our organization, as you heard from Dr. Hawkins' four, and then resonate as a full practice through, throughout our district. But it was, it was important for us to have a starting point. And thank you, thank you, Mary, for being a willing starting point to show that the work went done the right way, is the right work, was important, helped behalf of our students. Good, Hawkins.
So just to wrap up, there are other leadership moves, including the socialization and just the implementation of the journey of lifelong learner. So our teaching and learning team under the leadership of Karen Stox-Glover, amazing team of instructional support staff have built out a whole continuum of how we will introduce and share this continuum of skills and characteristics that we believe everyone is in the realm of, adult to child, student, teacher, staff. These are the skills and attributes needed to allow anyone to be a member of a diverse global society. We also want to highlight the work of increasing the number of students who have earned the seal of biliteracy, and that is indicator R222. And we speak specifically about raising the awareness and the number of students that have earned the seal of biliteracy. And so in 22, the 22, 23 school year, we had nine students. And then this year, we're excited to say that we have 36 students. And that is attributed to the work that's happening across our district, but under the leadership of Rosmaria Larson and that team, and making sure that our students and our parents understand the value of being biliterate. And we think about thriving in a global society. It is a skill that many of us wish that we had, to be able to communicate and to live and assimilate in another culture. And so that is something that we're especially proud of. We also then just want to point out, we realize that the tool that we've used, it is, it tries to quantify things that sometimes are not quantifiable. One of the things that the Hanover group said to us is that, hey, you should probably use some other data points because this data point alone with anecdotal data and the other evidence we share is a better picture of the work that is really happening. And so I'll close with, these are some of the things that we're doing to support R4. And based on the work and the discussion that you all had, I look forward to us as a team digging into and finding other ways to share and to promote the work that we're doing to, around this particular indicator in R4. That concludes R4.
Okay. Questions from board members related to R4 specifically, and again, for the team as they're present here to help us? Sidell, for the anecdotal stories. I know a few of us have really elevated, as we've done already, about just the power of the leadership moves and the stories behind that and how telling it is, even though, again, this is a results policy, right? We're talking about impact on students, how you highlighted the pull-through of staff and education leaders walking that same talk that we're attempting to implement and integrate with our students. So it just was nice to hear your voice and hear some examples of some of the power of the work that's happening really at the classroom level, at the site level. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, too.
All right. I will then look for my language because I still use it if it helps me. We've received and discussed a bit of monitoring report results policy 4. I'll again, accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented so we can just continue any discussion around reasonable progress. Is there a motion?
Motion, Mary.
Thank you. Christopher, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. Any further discussion in terms of this monitoring report demonstrating reasonable progress as presented by administration?
So many questions, but I think it's just around our conversation that we're going to workshop, put into workshop.
Yeah, and I think, as you're saying that, I'm thinking again, then if we are thinking of reworking even the monitoring reporting calendar, how we align a workshop calendar that maybe even reflects some of these things that we hypothesize around and wonder about in terms of indicators results, maybe there's ways to even tie some concrete ways of workshopping too. So it isn't always this nebulous thing of, we need a workshop. I own a lot of that. I feel that tension a lot, so. Ideas are great, yes. Not now ideas, I suppose those can be great too. Any further discussion before we finalize our votes? All right, so we have a motion for Christopher and a second from John. And after, no more further discussion. All those in favor of approving results policy 4 as presented as achieving reasonable progress signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? R4 has been approved. All right, moving on through the agenda then. So with our restructuring, we're at board updates. Any general updates from any board members to share this evening? I was going to highlight calendar. Yep, yep. So just a few reminders to the board, and you probably got notice. Thank you, Lori, for just putting things out in terms of notice of potential forum. So tomorrow morning, I believe it's for sure Christopher and myself, we'll be attending the new staff meeting. So that will be happening in the morning. If anyone ends up available just from like 8 to 9 to meet and greet with all the new Wildcats joining our VASD family of staff. August 25th has been listed on the calendar as well. That's the BSU-sponsored back-to-school event that's happening here at the high school, yes?
Correct.
From 1 to 5?
12.
12 to 4.
12.
Okay, thank you. I'm doing this for memory immediately. Thank you. So again, notice has been given, so feel free to come or if that works in your schedule. Convocation, of course, on the 26th on Monday morning. Look forward to seeing all of you in your shirts at convocation. And then just planning ahead for the WASB convention in January. If you want to start to brainstorm calendars, Lori, maybe you could clue us in. We can look on the website too, but dates and information, I think, to help Lori plan in advance for any of us that would like to attend the WASB convention this year so Lori can assist with accommodations and the necessary travel plans. So starting to just plant the seed for that. You don't have to commit right away, but I think Sue would start to help Lori as well.
So the main hotel sells out pretty fast and you don't want to lock in the cold to get to the conference.
Like I had to do. I don't think it was a late registration, but yeah, I hooked it around in 20 below. It was good times, good times. Milwaukee in the throes of January. Did I miss anything in terms of calendaring dates? Just spend a lot of time together celebrating everybody coming back to school. It's so exciting. All right, so in our, again, restructuring, we're then moving on to superintendent's consent agenda. Again, please just look that over if you've not already. Any questions? Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. And then board consent agenda, again, any questions about what has been shared there? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is also approved. So we did just talk about some future agenda dates, but mostly what's listed here, of course, convocation and just upcoming board meetings. Knowing that the 23rd, September 23rd, we start at 5:00 PM, so just making that note for your calendars because of the annual budget hearing. All right. With all of that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Thanks, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Christopher. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much, everyone. Thanks, leadership team, board members. Appreciate all of the time tonight.
Thank you.
See you at convocation.